Following the meeting for tonight to order and for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any rule, all please.
Councilmember Yanbiel Zapsen, councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Salasweo.
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer.
I'm here. I'll look for a motion now to excuse Mr. Chambers.
I'll make a motion that we excuse Greg.
I'll support.
Any discussion? All those with papers signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Motion to approve the consent agenda that will have committee of the whole, the special meeting and the meeting dates for 2018.
I'll make a motion to support.
I'll second.
Any discussion or changes on any of them? Suzie?
Councilmember Yanbiel Zapsen, Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salasweo.
Yes.
And councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
A since comment for items not on the agenda.
Evening Mayor and City Council. I'd like to draw your attention to something that happened late last week. On Thursday, November 29th, 2018, at approximately 11:00 PM, Sergeant Chris Hurst and the Lowell Police Department responded to an active house fire on Grand River Drive. Sergeant Hurst was the first one on the scene and he was joined shortly after by Lieutenant Corey Belson of the Lowell Fire Department. At great risk to himself with heavy smoke and flames visible in and outside the residence, Sergeant Hurst and Lieutenant Belson found a lone occupant just inside the home located behind a sliding glass door. They were able to smash the glass out and pull the occupant to safety. They immediately realized he wasn't breathing and they started CPR. They were calling for the ambulance. As soon as the ambulance arrived, they quickly loaded this lone occupant into the ambulance and he was later declared deceased at the hospital. When I say it was at great risk to themselves, there was an oxygen tank inside the home as the resident of the home was on oxygen. That tank exploded shortly after they pulled him out of that house. So I know Sergeant Hurst is a very humble person and he doesn't want the recognition, but I asked him to be here tonight. He had no idea why. But I'd like you to publicly thank Sergeant Hurst for his heroic efforts at night.
Thank you. Thanks, Chris. Thanks, Chief. Anybody else? All business for AMA City Council appointments. So we have both the applications in our packet. We do have break on until the 6th. What I'd like to do, if there's no objections, I'll set a meeting for Saturday, the 8th at noon. We'll interview the candidates and then we'll give us a week to think it over before we have this meeting on the 17th. Any objections to that?
Just a point of clarification, just in your packet, the application for Cliff Dinkin, there was a type of, states that he moved to town in September of 2018. That is, that is a type of, but it was September of 2017, just for a point of clarification.
Any objections to that?
No.
I'm good.
Okay. Suzie can set that meeting for us. Saturday morning at noon, we'll just do it here. Good? All right. All business for AMA City Income Tax Linkroom.
Yes. Earlier in the year, the City Council approved a study with the Great Lakes Economic Consulting Group pertaining to a consideration of a city income tax. For the past three months, they have been researching data to determine an estimated amount and to present information to us regarding this. In your packet is the information for the presentation and Mitch Bean and Bob Klein are here again to formally present this information to you. So I'm going to turn it over to them and feel free to come on up.
Well, first, I want to thank the city manager and the city council for engaging us to conduct this study. We believe the report, you know, contains all the information and means to make an informed decision about whether to present income tax proposal to the holders. And what I want to do is kind of go through, go through the report page by page. It'll be up on the screen and kind of point out the highlights. And then Mitch is going to talk about a couple of other things after I'm done. And then we'll be happy to answer questions. The first part is, you know, just an introduction summary. You keep going up to that. Hold on, whoops, go back down, right there. You see that our estimate, which I'll get into in a minute, about $1.5 million from the resident, non-resident and corporate income tax. You can see the cost of administration, $151,000. The laws from the proposed formula property tax cut, $480,000. So the net revenue gain would be about $851,000. And let's go to page, page two. Page two talks about the reasons to consider a city income tax. And there are a couple of reasons. The first is the slow growth in the property tax. For example, Lowell's taxable value is down 2.4% below the 2009 peak. And that's pretty good compared to a lot of state cities. And as a total, property tax, or excuse me, taxable value is down 17% from the peak, peak year, which was 2008 for all cities. The other thing is that cities have very limited revenue sources. Michigan has more restrictions on the local unit's ability to raise revenue than almost any other state. So besides the property tax, you have revenue sharing and of course fees and so forth. As you know, revenue sharing is cut quite substantially. So the growth potential of the income tax, go down, keep going, stop right, whoops, down to that table. This table shows you that the growth potential of the property tax versus the city income, a city income tax. The property tax, based on, you know, what the property tax has been doing lately in Lowell, we assumed a 1.5% annual increase. You know, we do have a cap, taxable value cap of the rate of inflation of 5% or whichever is less. So we're assuming 1.5% on the property tax, about 4% on the income tax, which is pretty normal for most cities. And so the revenue growth under an income tax for 10 years would be $712,000, whereas a property tax would only be $275,000. So I think that's one pretty strong reason for maybe considering an income tax. Let's go up to page, let's go to page three. Page three includes a lot of information about the local option city income tax. I'm not going to go into any detail on that, so let's keep going ahead. Keep going. Four, Mitch is going to talk about the administrative issues after I'm done, so keep going. Let's go up to page five. Page five gives you the data for all the other cities that have enacted income tax. There are 24 cities. Menon Harbor and East Lansing enacted an income tax in the past year. Those are the first two cities to enact an income tax since 1993. And other cities are, I think they're looking at it. We did an income tax city for, I think, a tax study for the city of Wyoming last year. I haven't heard what they're going to do with it. They are considering it. So I think, you know, we probably reached a kind of a crisis point in the local government finances. So I think the city income tax is a more attractive option to more cities. Let's keep going. Okay, the next sections are, keep going and stop there on exhibit two. The next section is kind of the methodology on the resident income tax. I'm not going to go into very detail. You know, it's all, you can see it all on exhibit three. Basically, you know, the resident income tax is 1% on compensation or wages for work done or services rendered. Social Security and pension income are not taxed, just so that I make that clear. And the data we used for this was provided by the Department of Treasury from state income tax returns for tax year 2016. And we used historical growth factors to estimate collections for tax year 2020. And those are explained in the report. And, you know, one of the more difficult things to estimate is what the compliance rate is. As you can see, for the resident income tax, we assumed 80% would be collected of what we estimated should be paid. And this was based on discussions we had with the Grand Rapids administrator and administrators in other, in other cities. It could be, I think that number could be somewhat conservative. So, you know, our estimate, you can see for 2020 is $630,000. But if the collections, if the collection rate is higher, of course, you know, the revenues are going to be higher. But let's keep going. Non-resident income tax, let's keep going, keep going. Let's get to the exhibit. Here again is the detail on the non-resident income tax. And this, this tax, in order to calculate this tax, we need the data on the number of people who work, you know, who work in the city but live outside. And this data is available from the U.S. Census Bureau for 2015. And you can see for 2047 was the number of people who, who worked in the city but lived outside and be subject to a tax. The other key thing here is the adjusted gross income. And the number we used for that was for, beginning provided by the state, is for the school, the Lowell School District. So we're kind of assuming that a lot of the people that work in the city, don't live in the city, live in their surrounding area. So that's, that's where the ADI number came from. And then we increased it by, and the study, it's pointed out, I think around 4% from 2016 to 2020, based on historical data. And here we assume, we assume a compliance rate of 85% for the non-resident tax. And again, this is kind of based on the experience of other cities. Let's keep going. So, you know, I talked about the compliance rate, you know, 80% for resident, 85% for non-resident. Corporate income tax, we didn't make any assumption on that. We had no way of knowing what that might be. But here, it just shows you that the collection would be at different compliance rates, from 100% to 75%. And if you assume that the collection rate was 100%, you would have collections of about, almost 1.8 million, which is about $294,000 than what our projections are. So if you wanted, you know, say, say you wanted to assume 100% compliance, that's, that's the number you would be. It would be $294,000 in our revenue. Let's, let's keep going. Okay, this, this shows you what the collection will be at different exemption levels. From 600, which is very, that's the standard in some cities. I think the highest, I think is, when you deal with, has 3,000. It's in the report on that table. It shows all the data for the cities. So we're assuming a $600 exemption. But if you wanted to increase it, each $100 increase would reduce your revenue by $6,000. So, so if you want to do it like, you know, another 500, that would be like $30,000 cost. Let's keep going. Yeah, right here. On this, on this section, we looked at a couple of ways to validate the estimates to see how accurate, you know, these estimates would be given, another, you know, another way of looking at it. And on the resident income tax, we looked at the per capita resident income tax collections for the five cities closest in population size to Lowell. And that number was $134.50 in 2016. And if we apply, apply that number to the population of Lowell, it produces an estimate of $509,000. And our estimate was, our estimate was $514,000. So that's pretty close. So that makes it kind of comfortable that, that looks like, you know, a pretty good number. And, I'm sorry. Then for the non-resident tax, we have, we use the same methodology we, we use for Lowell for the Pier, because we had pretty good data from the city of the Pier. They're about twice as large as Lowell, but I think they're fairly comparable in a lot of ways. And so exhibit seven is, is the detail. But you can see that we, using our methodology, we came up with an estimate of $1,795,000. And the actual collections from the city of Pier or, $1,903,000. So again, that was an error of about 5.7%, which is, which is, you know, I think pretty close. So again, that makes it somewhat comfortable that that's a fairly, fairly good estimate. And in the report, we also, we also looked at the city of Albion. And again, I did put a table in there for Albion, but we used a similar methodology and we also came pretty close. So that, that's explained in the report. Let's keep going. I think, did we go by the corporate income? Keep going back down. Keep going down. Yeah. The corporate income tax is the most difficult to estimate. There is no data on corporate profits in cities or counties. There isn't even anything really for states, actually. So what we did, we kind of looked at business tax receipts, which the latest available data for cities is 2012 from the sense of economic census. And we looked at collections in Grand Rapids and a couple of other cities as a percent of those business receipts. And we applied that same percentage to the business receipts for the city of Lowell and for 2012. Then we had to, you know, estimate what 2020 might be, using, using growth trends. But the corporate income tax is very volatile. So, like, for 20, we're estimating $141,000 for 2020. But if we happen to have a recession in 2020, that number could be 30% to 40% less. That tax goes up and down. So fortunately, corporate income tax is only going to be about 10% of your receipts. So if we're off, you know, the number won't be, won't be that large. But anyways, it's very difficult to estimate the corporate income tax. The next thing is, we had a 10-year revenue forecast and we assumed a 4% growth rate for the resident and non-resident income tax and 3% for the corporate income tax. And again, based on historical trends and keep going, keep going. And these are the numbers here. Actually, you saw those earlier when we were comparing the property tax. But you can see the growth, the 10-year revenue growth, assuming these numbers are right, $712,000. And we, this is looking at the impact of the formal property tax cut, which is one of the options that you're looking at. And you can see the, based on this, the average tax increase for homeowners would be about $252, which would be a $502 income tax, less about a $250 property tax cut. And, keep going. And here we, we show what the impact would be, the net impact by family size and income. And we, we're, here we assume that the value of the home would be twice income, which is about the average. I mean, it can vary quite a bit, of course. But you can see, this assumes, you know, a $600 exemption. And of course, I'll tell you about the income tax, the more you make, you know, the more you pay. It's fairly, fairly modest for people making $25,000 or so, but when you get up to $200,000, you know, fairly substantial number. But still, relative to, say, the state income tax or the federal income tax, still, still pretty low. Let's keep going. This just shows the impact of the tax cut, the property tax cut by class of property. And you can see residential, residential, the cut is about $270,000. And the, the income tax increase for residents, I, I forgot my number, $630,000? Can you go back up a little bit? I'll keep going quite a bit. Little bit more. One more. Oh, okay. Keep going. Sorry about that. And we've got to go even one more. Resident. No, one more. There we go. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. 630,000 and, as I indicated, the $270,000 property tax cut. So, what's that, about $460,000 net increase in terms of the income tax for residents of the city of Lowell. I think that probably covers pretty much my part. And Mitch is going to talk a little bit about administration. And we also have something in the report about the potential economic impact of the income tax. So Mitch is going to talk about that. And then we'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to hit a couple of things on page four. And this is administrative issues that we need to consider, that you would need to consider if you choose to do this. And I'm not going to go through this entire list, but I hit four, the last four. One, and I'm going to talk more about, the state is invested in system process municipal returns. They're currently using in Detroit as a pilot. And Michigan Department of Treasury is currently considering gradually expanding, probably include other interests in municipalities. That hasn't happened yet, but that could be, and I'll talk about that as one of your potential options. Currently, all Michigan municipalities, there was 20, not 21 with East Lansing, use the same commercially available software, tip, crack receipts and compliance. And some of the also contract with firms that supplies the software to administer the tax. And I gave you your manager some paperwork on that, if you want to follow up on it. E-filing is the potential to reduce administrative costs, but it does require some interaction with software vendors. Currently, about one-third of the city returns are filed electronically. A city that is, is, is income tax is going to need to point, we believe, an income tax board would be very similar to what would, it would operate in similar manner to a property tax board would be. So some administrative issues that you probably want to consider. Now, if we go to page 12, talk a bit about the potential cost of administering a city income tax. Go down further down, please. Yeah, there we go. I'm sorry, your page 12 was tougher than my page 12. That's okay. Go down a little bit further. Yeah, here we go. One option, of course, would be to do it all in-house. Now, regardless of whether you chose to do all of it in-house or just, or just hire someone, I think you're, you're going to have to have an additional staff member if you choose to do this, to administer this. Now, what I've got here is what would be perhaps a reasonable cost of an employee to set up an in-house position. I've got an income tax minister who had an annual wage of $60,000. And I've got healthcare benefits, pension, everything lined up. So you see what total cost it would be. And I've got miscellaneous costs of $50,000 for software and supplies and so forth. Now, I think that cost would be declining, that would be an initial, so it'd be, they would cost you, your initial year of setup would be more expensive when you get software and do the greatest things you need to do. So I can see the cost declining a bit if you were to get one person dedicated to this. And probably what you're going to need to do is do that and at least do that and have them interact perhaps with, either with the city of, or with the state or with a vendor. Now, a second option, I'll just, as a thought, in the Pier form, we looked at administrative costs. The Pier was $237,000 and Port was $133,000. So the 151 is kind of right in the middle of that. So it's, let's be honest, at least a reasonable place to start looking at the potential cost of individual.
Before we skip all this, that software, just a one-year time fee and then there's some support agreements that follow for the $50,000 and be a one-time purchase and it'd be some recurring software support agreements.
There'd be some recurring costs, but I think the initial was probably about $50,000. Maybe your initial, I think you have some recurring costs involved. And part of that you'd have to work out with the vendors to what you, what exactly you want to do. The second option is, would be contracting, talking to Department of Treasury. I say they administrate, they currently administrate the city tax for the city of Detroit. They process individual returns started in 2015, protection 2015, so began early 2016. And then corporate partnership, producer returns started with tax of 2016, so began 2017. Treasury actually designs their form, forms they use, maintains the portable, the portals to be refile, issue refunds, accepts both expected annual payments and beginning 2017 withholding, withholding payments that are due to Treasury as well. So they're really taking an awful lot of what city of Detroit. Of course, city of Detroit has some unique challenges that I don't think you folks would have. But that's, that's certainly an option. Fees paid to the Treasury for 2016 for $528 million, that went to the state Department of Treasury. It's not materially, materially different for 2017. There's agreements in process and in a process that's in place, decide to come to long-term agreements. I say currently this option is only available to Detroit, but there's a possibility Treasury would be open to doing this for other interests in the future. So something to keep in mind if you decide to do that direction. Should be noted that it currently is a bit costly and hilly, but that may be due in part, I say, to unique challenges the city of Detroit faces that you wouldn't potentially face. Now, a third option, which I've mentioned, is contract with private vendor for software and do as much or all administering the tax. There's, I talked to a person who is up at this firm, I said he has some paperwork, Mike. But if they're willing to do any or all of it and give you bids for just whatever part of the process that you think might like them to do. And currently, they're doing it for every city in Michigan and sort of other states as well that have the city income tax. So this is a good source. Does seem to be perhaps a cost-effective option. And as I said, they assure, they assure us, that they can give you, that they would give you competitive bid on any aspect of which you'd like to them to help you out with. And then next I'd like to talk about, and this is Independence 1, it begins on page 16. There's been a lot of research in recent years on the impact of various types of investments in what we're calling investment in place. And that's, of course, you're talking about, as I understand it, using any potential revenue if you go this direction for roads and so forth, infrastructure within the city. But economics in place, the studies have, have shown it, it's really important actually to economic prosperity and it's as important as tax breaks, smaller government, and perhaps even more so. Research has shown, for example, and I'll hit a few highlights here, physical design and walkability in a city is positively correlated to property values, income, educational attainment, employment, new business starts. Many businesses are also increasingly making the expansion, relocation, new business development station based on which communities are most walkable. Mixed streets walkable downtown development generated 10 times as much tax revenue per acre. It saves about 40% on upfront infrastructure costs and results in about 10% lower costs for service, moving sprawl, multi-motor. Now, of course, some of these areas, smaller cities, so some of these are going to apply more to than, than they would, some would apply more to a larger city. But you'll obviously, you'll figure that out. Multi-motors, bone transportation systems that accommodate walkers, bikers, bus and rail passengers and drivers facilitate prosperity and growth. Residential property values increase based on proximity to bus or transit applies much to 150%. Transit and bicycle infrastructure also correlated with increased jobs and wages. And for each one of these, I've got a, as you can see on the screen here. And for each one of these, I've got a system you see on the screen here, sources where this comes from. So if you want to, as we take a look at this and research before you can. But also just to continue, you know, investment in higher environmental assets also matter. Policy investments that support environmental sustainability positively affect community identity tracking this, increase property values, incomes, employment levels, parks and trails, help attract and retain well-educated professionals in turn and fluid business decisions on more locator span. 70% of communities' infrastructure assets such as wetlands, water, trails have a positive impact on population income and employment trends. Arch and Carson cultural amenities improve the communities' competitive edge and contribute to a sense of place, attract visitors, talent, and business. Just for example, of course, Grand Rapids, Grand Rapids art parties, this is an example of connection between arts and economic prosperity. The tribute festival draws about a half million visitors each other and generates over $20 million in economic impact. Investment in place also increases agricultural activity. And that's measured through venture capital investment as positively correlated to incomes as well as the percentage of adults within a community who are college graduates, positively related to this, also positively related to density, biking to work, development in the arts, and therefore reinforcing relationship between the eight assets. Growth-oriented entrepreneurial startups, particularly high-tech companies, are generally responsible for most small business job creation, job protection. And then lastly, investments in technological infrastructure are also important. Investments in technologies such as high-speed internet infrastructure, they accelerate business, develop it by supporting innovation, professionalism, expanding existing businesses and creating commerce opportunities. And there's more within the report. I say the sources are there if you'd like to talk about it. Now, I'll sit down and we'll answer any questions.
For the 24, 25 communities in the state that there is, there's obviously your larger cities, your Flunt, Detroit, Scram Rapids, that obviously have the city income tax. A lot of your smaller communities that have it tend to be communities that either have state prisons, universities, things of that nature that, because those are tax-exempt properties, very large employers, they've utilized the city income tax for that. Lowell or neither of those. And there's a number of communities that do the city income tax that are very similar to us in the sense that they don't have state-run facilities, educational facilities, things of that nature. Perfect example, I can think of is the city of Springfield. But the question I have is, has there been any data or any type of, there's always a philosophy, there might be the mindset by some that if you have the city income tax, it's going to attract business and it might cripple a community by implementing that. Is there any data or any, is there anything out there that might dispute or?
No, there's, you know, there's no specific studies that have a conclusion, you know, one way or the other in terms of the city income tax. I mean, there's a lot of studies done on those state multiple taxes and how it impacts economic growth and so forth. You can find one study that says it has no impact, another study that says it does have some impact. But you know, a 1% income tax, yeah, probably is not going to have a major, major influence. And of course, you know, in the non-business, it's a half percent. So if you do look at some of the cities that have the income tax, a lot of them have the income tax because they have no property tax base. I mean, you can think about, you know, Ben Harper, of course, you know, the state average taxable value is about 33,000. I think Ben Harper is like 10,000. And Pontiac, you know, they're about 10,000 taxable value per capita, and they have the income tax. So a lot of these cities, Highland Park, they were kind of forced, and the property tax was just not doing their job, so they had to go someplace else. That's not the case in, you know, like the city of Walker, for example, they have the lowest property taxes in the state. I think they have three million city tax because, you know, they enacted an income tax. They think that's, you know, a better way to go and fairer than the property tax. So, you know, and of course, you're going to be using some of your resources to reduce the property tax and to spend on roads. And as Mitch was pointing out, you know, where you spend the money is probably the main determinant of how it's going to impact the community. You know, if you don't have good public services, people around the, you know, that probably has as much of negative impact as high taxes. So, you know, you've got to have, you've got to have a balance. So from my standpoint, I think, given the fact that the property tax is so limited in Michigan, is not going to be growing, and the income tax can be a fairly attractive alternative. And I, I mean, people are got, people have been moving out of cities for ages here, you know, 50, 60 years. That's probably not going to change too much. But I can't think, you know, that just another 1%. If you have, if you have a nice community, you have good services, you know, you've got to fix your roads, I don't think too many people are going to leave just because you got to pay another 1%. At least that's my opinion.
Just to figure something, so you kind of understand this. Just the general fund, basically, all our services are provided for. Most of our DPW, police, fire, administrative city hall costs, it's about $3 million. Property taxes we receive in the city to pay for that is about, you know, 1.5, 1.6 million roughly. So we're only about 50, 50% of what we, what we get to run the city is on property taxes. And when you look at our community in comparison to some other communities, we have very little value. We generate $99,000 a mil for one mil of taxes. And where a lot of communities, for example, Rockford, is double that. And then there's East Grand Rapids, which is four times that, actually, no, six times that. And so we're constrained by the fact that we have lower property values in the city to begin with. And we're at the point, obviously, now where we have, we have infrastructure needs that we can't pay for right now. And whatever way you go, maybe city income tax isn't for you. I don't know. But we need to start thinking about how we're going to be able to address these needs, or quite frankly, we have to start thinking about different things we want for our city. And I don't know if that's a positive thing either.
You know, in about a year, we'll have some experience with East Lansing city income tax. And so that, now, to give you some idea, you know, it is a university city, which is a different, bigger city. But still, in terms of the impact and the collections and so forth, that might be helpful. I assume you're not going to make a decision on that that quickly, so.
Does the income tax have to be voted on by the people?
Yes, it does.
Did your study do anything of, any kind of polling or anything of what the community feel for where the community is on that?
We were not, no, we were not asked to do that.
Okay.
Then that could be done.
Sure. At this point, this was basically to verify the data that I submitted, and I believe this was a much more thorough than what I provided you a year ago. I thought mine was pretty thorough, but this was definitely a lot more. And I do thank them for their efforts. They did, they did an excellent job on the study.
I just want to say one more thing here. If you get serious about this, you should talk to the Grand Rapids administrator. They've got a good system in place there, and, you know, their ordinance is kind of a model that other cities could use.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else, anything you'd like to know on this topic?
This all comes after.
All right. Item C, recreational marijuana facilities, the next steps, Michael.
I didn't prepare a memo for you on this, but the, we didn't prepare a memo on this, but as we all know, we chose at the last, at the meeting on Wednesday, we chose not to opt out of proposal one. So there will be, the city will then ultimately allow for recreational commercial marijuana facilities within the city. Just because you did that, your work isn't done. There's a number of things that still need to be done, some that we can do now, some we have to wait. Some of the, and I was trying to basically steer the council to see where they wanted to go with this. First thing is, obviously, LARA is going to dictate on their end as to what, what's going to be allowed, what the rules and regulations are. All of the, all of the components of that that really are what we're going to have to follow once those issues are enacted. But some of the things that the council can really start thinking about is where they want to allow us. Obviously, Steve gave you what the legal end is to where, where the facilities can go, but the council on their own has the ability to regulate that even more than what the, what the proposed statute will allow. So you do have a right to dictate where you want it and where you don't, if that's, if that's so you choose. That's one thing. And then the other thing, obviously, is, is you obviously have to, at some point, establish zoning, zoning regulations for the types of facilities and the locations of the zoning districts as to where you want them. So that's obviously going to involve more of a planning commission and things of that nature. But there's, there's a lot of things you can, you can do. Another thing to consider also is the number of facilities. There are six types of businesses under the Commercial Marijuana Act that you can have. You have to allow for all of them to be considered in your community, but you could decide whether you wanted two of each, one of each, five of each. It's really, that's really up to the council if they, if they so choose. So thought I'd at least want to get you started and starting to think about these things as you, as you move forward, because LARA will have their, their rules and regulations supposedly in a year, but you probably want to have things in place before that year, at least on, you know, the areas you would want it.
Well, it's going to take a meeting with the planning commission, too. I think we had talked about that. And then Jim, you're going to a LARA meeting.
Oh, I know, I have some representative for our work to go there, yes.
Here.
One question. Is, is the council going to look at reconsidering medical marijuana because you had voted not to, because before the council meeting, we, I asked a couple of questions, and Steve said that it's two different, two different issues. And so I'm just wondering if you, you know, when you're going about this, if you're going to reconsider or figure out rector, medical marijuana, so.
My understanding that none of the control that we have has changed on that, so I don't, and I think that was our main motivating factor for now, I know that we had no control, right? Like we do with recreational marijuana.
I believe there's a lot more, I believe there's a lot more restriction for the local government, certain things that you'd like to see that the medical marijuana didn't have.
So I think your, your answer would be, no, we're not looking at medical marijuana at this time, we're considering it. Correct?
Yeah. So I understood our discussion.
So what do you think? I mean, do you want to try maybe in January, having a meeting with the planning commission?
Yeah, I think they're planning on absent us needing them for anything, not having a December meeting. So maybe that's the January committee of the whole then. And then we can formulate a line of steps from there, I guess. Because we can regulate everything, right? Signage, all that stuff?
Yes, the only thing you can do is you can, you can definitely regulate signage. There's a number of examples across the country about how that's been done.
And how not to do it.
Correct.
So which meeting in January? Well, the planning commission meets, what, the?
They meet, they meet second, so.
So that's the 14th.
So then Tuesday, the 22nd would be your, your meeting. So you'd probably do a committee of the whole that meeting.
Right.
We usually do them second Tuesdays. We can reach out to the planning commission to see if that would be amenable to them.
Let's do that, and then we'll take a different name. Good? Good? Okay. All right. New business, item A, ordinance 18, light and power, Steve.
Good evening, thanks for having me. Included in your packet is a proposed amended section 22.1, bill in enforcement of chapter 22, electric utility rates and charges of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Lowell. This section of the Code of Ordinances applies only to Lowell Light and Power. And at Lowell Light and Power's November 8th board meeting, there was a consensus by the Lowell Light and Power to recommend to the city council three changes to that section of the ordinance. And we'll run through those three changes. The first is reducing the amount of the required electric deposit from three months to two months of the estimated electric bill at that address or property. The second proposed change is permitting a property owner who leases property to a tenant who is, and where the tenant is responsible for paying the electric charge. The property owner and the tenant in Lowell Light and Power could execute an agreement so that instead of having the tenant pay a deposit, the property owner can be responsible for any outstanding electric balance that may remain through a lien on their property. So it would just make their property more attractive to either rent or lease. And this came up with the Ventures Atwood facility. For the last seven years, Ventures, the property owner has had the electric bill in their name. For sales tax benefits to Atwood Corporation, they want to put the bill in Atwood's name. But according to the Code of Ordinances as written, Atwood would then need to pay a deposit equivalent to three times the electric bill, which is close to $100,000. And this doesn't make business attractive for either Ventures or Atwood. So the alternative is allowing Ventures to execute an agreement saying that if Atwood leaves them with a balance, we could lien Ventures. So that Lowell Light and Power is not out any money, and the situation could continue as it has been for the last seven years where Ventures would be responsible for a lien. The third change that's being proposed is applying a customer's deposit toward their final bill upon termination of electric service. This is how we're currently operating right now. In regards to the first change, Lowell Light and Power has AMI metering technology. That technology has benefited Lowell Light and Power. We're now able to bill people's electric usage later in the month. Bills are always sent out the last business day of the month, but instead of reading meters between the 10th and the 15th of the month, we can actually read meters on the 26th or 27th, because to turn those bills around is much quicker. So the vast majority of the time, a resident or a business can never have more than 60 days of outstanding usage through the billing cycles. So there's really no need for Lowell Light and Power to have three months' electric deposit unfiled. So that's the reason to move it to two. And again, that second change by permitting a contract between the landlord, the tenant, and Lowell Light and Power simply makes Lowell a more attractive place for residents to locate and businesses to do business, and it still protects Lowell Light and Power and the ratepayers through the lien process. So it's Lowell Light and Power's recommendation to approve section 22.1 of chapter 22 of the city code of ordinances as presented in your packet.
This one unanimous through your board, or went through your board?
Yep, there was a consensus. It actually wasn't voted on, but there was a consensus, and Marty asked that we bring it to city council.
Perfect. Okay. Anybody want to make that recommendation?
I'll make that recommendation to adopt in section 22.1 of chapter 22 of the city code of ordinances.